I would like to call to order the October 21st Milford City Council meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence, and during your moment of silence, please keep in your thoughts and prayers those who are battling breast cancer and those who have lost their battle.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jackie, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Evans?
Here.
Vice Mayor Parrish?
Here.
Mr. Velardo?
Here.
Mr. Price?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Ms. Cooper?
Here.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Here.
All right, that takes us to proceedings. Do I have a motion to approve the council meeting proceedings from October 7th?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Financial statements. Do I have a motion to receive the September 2025 financial report?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
And that takes us to public comments. Is there anyone from the public that would like to make a comment? Just please state your name and address for the record.
Walter Akers, 104 Sycamore Street. Well, just recently, we had a movement to have the soccer fields converted into a temporary field for FCC Cincinnati. Is that correct?
Not a temporary field. It's a community field, like for children.
Now, I just recently spoke to somebody that had been in other meetings in the past, and I've made some phone calls. It's my understanding that the park was under a federal grant. That's how we got the park. Is that correct, or is that completely city money?
I do not know the history of the park.
I don't know the history of the park in terms of how the city got it. However, the person and what you're referring to, we've already responded to the state regarding that grant that was received, and despite what was said, it's totally inaccurate. So everything that we are doing is in compliance with the grant.
I have no idea what we just were talking about, because I don't know what was said. My concern was that, under the conditions of the grant, they weren't supposed to be used for any items other than outside spaces, that we weren't allowed to build anything on it or use it for other reasons.
I don't think so.
So, under the grant, the primary focus is to keep it a public park. So everything that is in the park is supposed to be for public purposes. So even with this mini pitch, it's a donation by FCC Cincinnati Foundation. This is still a public amenity that is offered in the park. So it's no different than the playground. It's no different than the pavilion. It's the same thing.
So the fields will be open to anybody to use?
Correct.
Okay. Well, I'd like to know how we can review the original minutes of the meeting, because I spoke to somebody that was on the board, and they said that it was said at the meeting that, with the understanding, this can no longer be used for anything other than open spaces. So how do we go back and look at that? Because we can't have it both ways. We accepted the money, and it was said it was going to be for open spaces. Now we're providing space for basically FCC billboards to be right across from my house. It takes away from the open spaces. It really takes away from the park, and it's really unneeded. We have soccer fields. We have fields that they could use that aren't hardly used at all. So why put it right there where we have people that use it on a daily basis for walking, walking their dogs, bringing their children? Now we're taking a huge percentage of it up for a practice soccer field that belongs to FCC Cincinnati.
It's just not. It's not a practice field for FCC. It's for, their foundation is building it for the kids in the community.
That's not what was said at the last meeting.
It was supposed to be said by council. The person you probably were talking to gave you wrong information.
Well, I still think we need to go back and review the minutes of the...
You can do, like, a public records request, and Ms. Jackie can get you the minutes from the last meeting. But they might be on the website also.
The last meeting would have been the meeting that when they accepted the funds for the grant.
Yeah, so Ms. Jackie can hook you up with that.
Okay. And where are we at on that?
So, the mini pitch is expected to start construction the week of November 10th.
All right. Thank you.
Again, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Dr. Douglas Bowe. I live at 116 Mount Avenue. My wife and I both received the notification in the mail about the changes to the city charter, and I commend whoever wrote it. Surprises me that we're in the 21st century, and some of those changes hadn't already been made. But the first article says that we're going to change our name from the City of Milford to the Village of Milford. Why? What are the advantages?
That wasn't a charter change, so that's not even what's been amended or changed. That's what's been in the charter for years.
Oh, it has?
Yeah, we're not changing anything. All that does is reflect Ohio constitutional law, which says, once you go under 5,000, you become a village, whether you like it or not, whether you want to or not. That's a matter of state constitutional law. So that's not even a change. So that's been in the charter, and that's not a change from what we're amending.
So we're not going to be a village?
No, you're still a city. And you couldn't be, even if you wanted to be, unless, well, our neighbor to the west...
Yeah, wherever.
One of those. Our neighbor to the west is the Village of the City of Indian Hill, but it's still a city.
Okay. Because I worked in Amelia for a while, and I got involved. I didn't get involved. I had to listen to everybody complain. They'd want to go to their pharmacist and talk to them and complain about everything. I feel sorry for the people of Amelia, but I didn't want to go through the same type of ordeal here. I knew there were some advantages of being a city versus a village, and I just wanted to make sure we weren't going to lose those privileges.
No, we could not, as a matter of constitutional law, even if we wanted to be.
Right, that's what I thought.
That's correct.
And Craig, may I ask for clarification? Because I have been asked this.
Yeah, me too.
That is strictly in there as provision, just in case, for whatever reason, if we would go under 5,000.
Right.
That's correct.
Which, I think we're at 7,800 or so.
Somewhere around there.
That was going to be my next question.
Yeah, somewhere in that general area.
I actually thought we were south of 7, but, like, maybe 6,500. But nonetheless, this has been a question that's been asked. We are going to put a little video together to highlight the changes, and then a fact sheet, but that will be something that I specifically address, because I know that has been a question that I've heard from numerous people.
Because we're going to vote on that, what, on the second?
Fourth.
Fourth.
Correct.
The other thing I wanted to bring up is, I live in South Milford, and some of my neighbors are here. And what Ashford has done over there by the old South Milford School, how much longer are we going to have to look at that dilapidated, half-torn-down school? I understand from other sources that Ashford has left, and it was quite obvious, they took down all their Ashford signs, and another realtor came in. So what are the plans for that school at present? Because it really needs to go. And the other thing is, whose white bus is that that's parked in that community, and it's just been sitting there for months?
So...
Because they've torn up, they've torn up that, I guess that's still Garfield at that point? They have really done a mess on that road, and they have left, and I imagine we'll all have to pay for the repercussions of fixing that road, because there's a lot of indentations. There's still an open sidewalk over there, and it doesn't have any safety tape around it. And there is a sign that says sidewalk is closed, but it's facing the 180 degrees from the direction of the sidewalk. But I'm just wondering how long we're going to have to put up with piles of debris, and that school's been half-torn down. The roof was taken off, I understand, without a permit. So what are the plans with that?
So, right now, the Planning Commission in September the 9th, and affirmed in the minutes on September the 30th, revoked the zoning. The developer just appealed to the Board of Zoning Appeals, so we're going to have to go through the litigation process.
Okay.
So I can't tell you how long, because I can't predict the litigation process, but it's in the litigation process.
What are they planning on doing with that school, then?
It would depend on what happens, because if they don't prevail on their appeal, then it will revert back to the prior zoning, and we'll have to deal with it then. But we're in litigation limbo, and there's nothing anybody, unfortunately, can do about it to make it go quicker or to expedite it.
Is there anything that citizens can do to help promote this, to move along?
No, I think, sitting through the Planning Commission meeting, and council knows, and it's a policy objective for council, that everybody knows that we need to get this thing done as quickly as possible. But they do have their constitutional rights, and we'll also abide by those. And if they take us through the litigation process, we'll vigorously advocate our position. But they have constitutional rights, too, and they have the ability to extend their litigation rights like anybody else.
Okay. So whose white bus is that?
Sorry, Doc, I don't know anything about that.
It's been parked there for months.
Not mine.
If it was mine, I would burn it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor.
Hi.
Hi. Elizabeth, our 431 Garfield. I am here from Old Milford Porch Fest, so I wanted to thank the city for their support this past weekend. It was a lot of fun on Saturday. We got really great weather, which was fantastic. And for those that don't know what Porch Fest is that are here today, we had 70 bands on 54 porches throughout downtown and then the surrounding neighborhoods over the weekend. So all sorts of genres, all sorts of music. We had everything from the Milford Marching Band to a floating band on a paddleboard in the middle of the river. So it was pretty cool. So we had a blast. We hope you did. We estimate an average of 60 people at each porch in the neighborhoods. Downtown, it's a little hard to tell, because people are just kind of wandering and whatnot. So that was pretty cool, every single hour, to have all those people coming into the neighborhoods and getting to wander and enjoy. And we would just appreciate your continued support. I know that we have some hosts that are here, some people that have people in bands that are here. So it was just a really great event, and we would appreciate your support as we grow it gradually in years to come. And our biggest hurdle this year was really volunteers. So if anyone is interested in getting involved, we would encourage you to go out to our website, www-oldmilfordporchfest.com, and sign up to volunteer so that we can get help in the future, making sure that we keep things running smoothly. So, thank you.
Thank you for all your efforts.
Thank you. It was a great event.
Yeah, I heard nothing but great reviews.
Well, and I think we should commend a couple of our colleagues on council for hosting.
Yeah.
Both Brad and Janet hosted on their porches, and it truly was a very unique and one-of-a-kind event. Not necessarily one-of-a-kind, but certainly unique to this community and a true asset. It was amazing how many people were out and about throughout this community on Saturday. Mother Nature was very cooperative.
One more day, I mean, a big difference.
And I believe that the governor set a record for Saturday.
Oh, did they? Okay. Well, which is exactly what you would hope for.
Yes.
They were swamped.
All right. Thank you. Wait, guys. Elizabeth, is it going to be, like, the third weekend of October? Is that, I mean, is that kind of the...
Our team has a fully committed...
Okay. All right. Would anybody else in the public like to make a comment? All right. Seeing none, that takes us to the city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor. I did not prepare a report for council, simply because about 90% of the last two weeks have been budget-related. However, I did want to bring up two things. As mentioned previously, the FCC mini pitch is slated to begin construction the week of November 10th, which works pretty well with the upcoming bike race on November 9th. So excited to get that underway and for that asset to be in the park. Once again, been working on the budget. Budget workshop is next Monday. I will be getting as much as I possibly can out to council in advance, so you have somewhat of, I'm not promising a lot of time, but some time to review the budget and in preparation for that event.
That's at 6:30, right, on the 27th?
Five o'clock.
Five o'clock.
Yeah.
Oh, five o'clock.
And that's...
I asked that.
Yeah.
It's 6:30 for you.
It was intentional. I think so.
And that, of course, isn't to pass the final budget, but to simply discuss it and ensure that we're all moving in the right direction. And then, lastly, I wanted to make note that the turn lane off of Worcester Pike onto Beechwood is closed for the next couple of days as we look to make some needed improvements...
You mean off of Round Bottom?
Excuse me, Round Bottom. Wrong road. Round Bottom. Round Bottom and Beechwood, as we look to address the curb there. That's all I have, unless there's any questions. Thank you.
All right, thanks. That takes us to Chief Mills and the police report.
Thank you, council, and happy birthday, Mayor.
Thank you.
I don't have a formal report, but I do want to report on some trunk-or-treats. Those seem to be growing in popularity. We were down at Texas Roadhouse last night for their trunk-or-treat. We will be at RDI this Friday with our partners from the Fire Department and some other community partners for a trunk-or-treat, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. in the Milford Shopping Center. Patterson Elementary is holding a trunk-or-treat Monday, the 27th. We'll all be here, but if you're looking for an opportunity to get out ahead of Halloween night, which is Friday, October 31st, those trunk-or-treats are a great opportunity for that. I do want to report that we had a stolen vehicle on the 131 subdivision area, along with several vehicles that were rummaged through. So please, 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 just a reminder to always lock your vehicle, remove all valuables, or at least get them out of sight. Lock it or lose it, as we say. And please call us if you see anything that looks unusual. We'd rather go on 99 false alarms than miss the one that might break the case for us. So it's a spree. We've been experiencing it for a few years now. Fortunately, we recovered our resident, well, Miami Township Police recovered our resident's car, unbeknownst to them even, at the scene of another stolen vehicle. So the bad guys stole the car from here, went up into Miami Township, ditched it, stole another car. So they're usually young people, and they're usually out late at night, so please don't be afraid to give us a call. Don't worry about looking up the non-emergency number, something like that. 911 is perfectly acceptable.
Okay.
That's all I have, unless you have any questions. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. That takes us to District Chief Nickel and the fire and EMS report.
Good evening. The only thing I really have to report is Chief Barrett started teaching a fire safety inspector class this week at Milford. Did it go on for, like, five weeks, a couple of days each week? And there's departments from Hablin County and Claremont County, so it's a good group, about 10 students, so that's all I have.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
So that takes us to our committee of the whole meeting. Do I have a motion to enter into the committee of the whole meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
All right, so our committee of the whole meeting is open. You call the roll, please, Jackie.
Ms. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Parrish?
Here.
Mr. Velardo?
Here.
Mr. Price?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Ms. Cooper?
Here.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Here.
That takes us to the public comment section of the committee of the whole meeting. Does anyone have a comment on any of our topics for committee of the whole? All right, seeing none, that takes us to our first topic. I'll turn it over to Mr. Gunderson.
Thank you, Mayor. The first two items for committee of the whole, they're essentially the same thing, different companies. This is for the water tower, cell tower lease. This is simply a renewal. The one thing I will point out is, once we get our new water tower on Wallace Avenue, we will have to redo these lease agreements, which is a good opportunity for us to get updated rates and reevaluate the terms. But this is essentially a renewal for both of those leases. This is a revenue source for the city and is something that I certainly suggest we continue for the next less than 12 months until we redo the lease agreements with both companies. To better understand why there's two, AT&amp;T is really sort of the master holder, and then T-Mobile, which is that Cellu site LLC, that's their consultant. They sort of do a sublease to AT&amp;T. So, once again, this is simply renewing both of those lease agreements.
Yeah, but I just have a question. You said, is it automatically renegotiable once we get the new water tower? Because the renewal clause that says it can be extended for five additional years, I mean, is that our option, their option?
So, under the current lease one, that's really what our law director brought up, is we don't really have a right to decline it. And that was one of the things we discussed, which is why in that new water tower, once that goes up, all these agreements will be redone. So that will really be our opportunity to reevaluate a lot of those sections.
And I read, too, where does it say that they're automatically, once we don't have that water tower, they go away? Or how does that work?
So, once the water, so the process that we'll follow is, actually, at this point, we're really going to start redoing these lease agreements, because they require, they like a 12-month notice, and we're already 12 months into really that notice period. So at that point, that's when we'll start redoing the leases, due to them having to switch the equipment. And you'll see with the AT&amp;T, they're actually upgrading the equipment, which is really what started this whole process. And our city planner looked at that. In fact, we thought we might have to go to Planning Commission due to the zoning code. That was fine, and it didn't need to go to the Planning Commission. But that is where we'll start to redo those agreements. So that is on both parties, though.
I would then make a recommendation that the law director draft an ordinance authorizing a lease agreement with AT&amp;T for equipment modification of cellular equipment, and also an ordinance authorizing certain provisions of the water tower lease agreement with sprintcom.in or sprintcomincorporated. Sorry about that. Second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
No.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
So the next one is literally the same thing. If council's comfortable with suggesting an ordinance, then it's the same thing, just simply a different company.
You have read both, didn't you?
I had read both.
Oh, my apologies. All right, moving on. My apologies. Next on the agenda is the Fire Department ambulance opioid funding. We discussed this last council meeting. The city has received money related to opioid settlement funds or lawsuits. The city does not have a plan for those fundings. However, this is a eligible use for the ambulance that the Fire Department is planning on purchasing, well, has purchased. So as we discussed last meeting, allocating for this point forward any remaining opioid funding revenues towards that ambulance, up to the amount that we're able to, once that ambulance is delivered. So essentially, what we'll do is, we'll simply earmark those funds within the Fire Department fund itself, so that way it's not spent, and that'll go towards the ambulance.
I would recommend that the law director draft an ordinance directing the city manager to set aside all opioid funding for the upcoming purchase of the Milford Community Fire Department ambulance purchase. Second.
Mr. Thompson?
I recuse my vote due to conflict of employment.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on, C Click Fix plus AI Chatbot. This is something that we've been working on for several months, and this really is in conjunction with our future customer service initiatives. Within the packet itself, I've provided further documentation in terms of what the software's do, but on a surface level, the AI Chatbot, what that's going to do is, we'll have a host site on our website, so we'll input information as to what our water bills do, what's on the council agenda, what has been passed. There's a whole list of information we want to be able to put on the website, so that way residents have the ability, from our mobile app, to type in, say, when's my water bill due, and it'll spit out the answer in a very quick manner. So that's something that not everyone has time to come in to City Hall, or not everyone can necessarily make calls during the day. So this is another service that we believe we can offer that benefits the community. So that's just a faster way to get information to the residents. Not that we are only doing softwares, but this is a part of the customer service initiatives that we would like to implement. Secondly, is the C Click Fix. This is used by several municipalities. What I really like about this is, it's a great software for residents to be able to report if it's a pothole, for example. They can pull up the mobile app, and it'll be a link or a tab on the mobile app, and they'll be able to take a picture of the pothole. They'll be able to confirm their location, and then they can send it in. They can request updates. So we might have, for a pothole, we might say it's received by whomever within the City of Milford organization. The Service Department has reviewed it, and then we fill the pothole, it's completed. So the resident will be able to track that. On the backend, we'll be able to better manage some of the smaller things that sometimes get pushed to the back burner if we've got bigger projects or something like that. So it's a good way to ensure that we're staying up to speed on potholes. If it's, it can be anything. It could be potholes, water leak, it could be nuisance properties.
Ring, white bus?
Yeah, a white bus, yeah, anything like that. The other positive to this is, and this is something that we can change internally, but we can allow it for, if I were to report a pothole, we can make it public. So that way, if it's someone else in the neighborhood, and they have, they see the pothole as well, they can actually subscribe to that case, we'll call it, and they can also get updates. It's not just the person that reports it. So I just believe that this is a great way to ensure that we're keeping up with some of those smaller projects, and it's also a good way for the community to be able to stay up to date on certain things that they've reported. And so I'm really excited about both of these. Why this is on the agenda is because I plan on inputting this or placing this in the 2026 budget. However, there's quite a timeline to implement this software. So what they're willing to do is, they're willing to start the process now and bill us in 2026, which is why it's on the agenda. It's also above my spending limit. But I wanted to make sure that I got council's approval before, A, we went ahead with the process, and B, I put it into the budget. But I feel very strongly about this. I think this is two big steps in terms of improving our customer service, so I'll take any questions. But I've provided some good, a couple of good documents, and I can provide further information in terms of other municipalities that use it, because this is used in several uh, because this, this is used, uh, in several municipalities.
And having actually used this in another municipality, it, it, it is truly enhances our ability to communicate with our residents. So, to the city manager's point, one of the, I think, biggest, uh, benefits of this is that internal communication, so that when someone reports it, they, they can get notified, they can share. Sometimes they get frustrated like the bus that sits there, but they could track why maybe that's not getting moved immediately due to pending litigation or, or anything along those lines. So, I, I'm certainly a big proponent of this, and I think this will only enhance our ability to communicate with our residents and to give them the tools that they can easily, uh, communicate with us too, so that they know, you know, that something is being taken care of.
Does this cost, a yearly cost?
Correct.
And we locked into a, is it so many year contract, or, oh, that, maybe, I see it.
Yeah.
One year on a month.
Yeah, it's a way.
Yeah.
Outside of like a login profile, is there any other of our citizens' information that is in the system?
So, it would follow along the same lines as our mobile app, so you should just put your, your name and at, um, name and email. As far, I haven't, I've created two of these accounts, and I haven't had to input anything else.
You can actually do it anonymously too. So, if you, a lot of times, in my case, we got it, they were neighbor disputes where, uh, uh, it's, it's an anonymous, now I, on the backend, you can, someone has to have an email so you can communicate, but they can remain anonymous so that they, uh, you know, for whatever reason. So, so it does have that functionality to it.
Sure. This, this also uses Amazon Web Services as a backbone? If it's down for 15 hours like it was yesterday, do we get any money back?
I get a big headache.
I can neither confirm nor deny that.
Okay.
Yeah.
I can ask the question.
Um, all right. Kidding, uh, that's kind of what my day job is. That's the only reason I noticed that, I wasn't expecting you to know. Um, I'm sorry, that's, that's all the questions I have, thanks. I've gotta give you a hard time occasionally, just for fun.
Will this also be available like from our website?
Yeah, that's.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so it'll be a tab on the website, so if you don't have the mobile app, you'll still have the ability. How that AI Chatbot works is it pulls directly from our website, so we'll essentially have a tab that will be like a Google Drive, let's just say. All the information will be inputted into, once again, that, that Google Drive, and that's where it pulls that information. So, in, in, and we have the ability to train that, but in the event that we don't have something on the website, then we'll have a prompt that might say, you know, contact this person if it's related, you know, if, we'll be able to, you know, pick out certain things, so if it's related to streets, you know, maybe we have them contact Eddie, for example. Or we'll have, you know, contact City Hall or, uh, something along those lines. So, we, we certainly don't want to leave it with, we have no answer, but it only pulls from what is directly on that website. So, to your question, everything will be on the website in some fashion.
Cool. Thank you.
The only other not really question, um, when you go back to them, assuming that council approves this, um, just a recommendation, the, the annual uplift of 5% in year two is a little high. I would tell them that you need 3% or tie it to the Consumer Price Index, see what they do, you might save us some money. Just throwing that out there, but.
Deal.
Uh, that's all I've got.
All right.
I would then recommend that the law director draft an ordinance allowing the city manager to engage with Civic Plus for the creation of the C Click Fix and AI Chatbot software. Second.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, moving on, severance agreement, Shannon Rolle. Uh, we are going away with a particular position, and, uh, the city made a very generous offer to part ways with this particular employee, and that's simply the agreement, and that's above my spending limit, which is why it has to come to council.
Unless anybody has any questions, personally, I would make a recommendation that the law director draft an ordinance authorizing a severance agreement, uh, and a general release between the city of Milford, Ohio, and very sadly personally, uh, Shannon Rolle. Second.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
All righty, thank you. Moving on, uh, this is the meet of the council of the hall, or committee of the hall, rather. I wanted, and, and this is simply a discussion, uh, this really tees up the budget conversation on Monday, but I, I wanted to discuss the water sewer and stormwater rate study. Obviously, this plays a huge role in terms of how we budget moving forward, uh, well, certainly into next year, but, um, you know, I, I know this was brought up last year during the budget workshop and, and how much we have subsidized the utility funds, and, and at this point, they're, they're far from being, uh, sustainable on, on, or self-funded, uh, they have to be subsidized by the general fund. And we're, we're unable to pay for a lot of the capital needs related to projects, equipment, et cetera, and it's, it's extremely important to increase the rates. I, I hate to be the person that has to do it or makes that recommendation, but it's extremely important. So, within the packet itself, I, I put the original rate study, I also put the updated sewer, stormwater, and, uh, water rates. I want to point out a few things, there's, there's been several discussions, certainly since the last time we discussed this at council. Even with that rate study, you know, it, it recommended, uh, pretty significant, it's, it's really, in terms of the dollar amounts, it's not as strong as what the percentages recommend. However, um, we, we have to eventually, you know, next year, for example, we're subsidizing water and sewer by almost $700,000, and that's $700,000 that we don't have in the general fund, that makes it very hard to do projects, and, um, we can no longer afford to go into our reserves, so we have to make a hard decision to increase rates, otherwise we'll, we'll never be able to dig ourselves out. If you look at the sewer fund, for example, we've got sewer collections, I have built in a 20% increase, which is what's recommended on the rate study. I am still almost $20,000 short when comparing revenues versus expenses, that's with a 20% increase. Now, um, the only reason why we're at 20,000 is because we're transferring over some of the funds from the old ca, um, sewer capital fund. We're going to go to one fund, and you'll see on those spreadsheets what it, what it shows is you have revenues up top, and you have the expenses on the bottom. That is a new format that I would like to implement on all budgets across the board, because I think it's easier to read and it's easier to track. Uh, there are certain things that I can't put all in one fund, but it's, it's a lot easier to track where our revenues are going, where our expenses are going. So, by consolidating, uh, at one point, we had a sewer operating and a sewer capital. Earlier this year, we went away with funding sewer capital, so we're just operating on the sewer operations or the sewer operating, that's where all the, the revenues are going. However, we still had money in sewer op, capital, which allowed us to do projects like the Happy Hollow Lift Station, so we've tried to draw that down a little bit, um, but there's still going to be some remaining funding. So, sewer, once again, even with the 20% increase, I, I am still $20,000 short. Now, there's a few ways we could.
Excuse me, with that short, you, there's a line item that we may transfer a lump sum over there, is that with or without that lump sum transfer?
So, what we're looking at, and, and this is really, um, I, I'm gonna have to better address that during workshop, because what, what we've run into, we discussed earlier this year, we budgeted a million dollars for that water tower, and we had discussed transferring 500,000 to sewer and 500,000 to water, because that would subs, that would significantly reduce the, the need to increase. We have transferred, or we have planned to transfer 250 to sewer. We were only able to do 250 because that water tower, how it, how that grant works is, or what we've been doing, is they send us a bill, we pay it, and then we get reimbursed through the grant. And we needed to ensure that we had money in that account to cash those, cash flow those invoices. We, we are taking a different approach now, where, once we receive the invoice from the contractor, we will submit for reimbursement through the state to get that grant. Once we receive the grant funding, then we'll pay the contractor. So, really, um, we're, we're not out anything, we're waiting for the, the grant money to come in, and then we'll pay the contractor, which means we've got roughly 600,000 in that water tower, um, fund that we, uh, will be able to transfer back to the general fund. Where the bigger discussion comes in is if, if we, um, do not utilize any of that money for projects next year, we'll have less than half a million dollars to utilize on projects. If we're able to use, utilize some of that money, then of course we can do more, but if we're going to transfer to the utility funds, then we, we just simply are gonna do very little next year, and, and that's totally council's decision, but that's sort of what we need to evaluate. But I, I want to keep in mind, and we'll have the, the consultants, um, rerun the scenario, but, once again, on sewer, even with a 20% increase, I can't get it to balance. So, that's where I think we have to figure out, you know, either we reduce, um, say, capital outlay, or we increase the transfer, um, from the general fund, but either way, we gotta make up 20,000, and, and quite frankly, we're, we're running very lean on projects next year in terms of the funding, so to cut that would, um, I mean, that's part of the hard decision we have to make.
And, uh, because, uh, we have kicked this down the can, or down the road for, for so long, we're in this situation, but I, I would hope that all our goal would be to make a solvent fund. I mean, we've got, you know, and, and we, we're gonna have to, um, uh, figure out how to do that appropriately, but, um, I, I would certainly be an advocate to, uh, put the least amount of burden on our residents as we can, uh, to, to balance that fund with the existing funds that we have, because I think as good stewards of the community money, that, um, we need to ensure that A, our water, you know, utility funds are, are, are whole, but it shouldn't be on the backs, additional backs, any more so than need be to the residents.
And I agree, and that, that rate study is very much catered towards that, uh, because if we were to actually increase it to the amount that's needed to ensure that we're able to do projects and build the, the account balance, it'd be way higher.
Right.
Uh, the, the mindset we've taken is that of, we want to mitigate that impact, and we will just know for how many, at least five years, if we do any projects, that is coming from, once again, outside funding or the general fund, that's the only way we can do it. And, and if you look at, for example, the trash fund, we, we're proposing to move that to stormwater next year. If, if you look at how the numbers sit currently, we, if the, if the trash fund was part of the general fund, we wouldn't be able to balance the general fund. We don't have enough money. We would have to be dipping into the negatives. So, by transferring it to the stormwater, that mitigates, uh, the, the negative impact on the general fund, it also lessens the, the need for that increase for, um, specifically trash, because we're able to utilize the stormwater because of the account balance. So, we've done everything we can to, to lessen that impact, but, um, I, I'm, I'm struggling to get some of this to work.
There's a pot of money, and, and we have to do it.
Unfortunately, it's, like you said, it's been, every year it's been a next year, next year, next year. And you can tell the difference on this chart, like, someone in Loveland is paying $70 more per, per billing than we are, I mean.
Yeah, oh, absolutely, I.
We gotta catch up.
There is gonna be a burden, but, but I also know that, um, one of the things, since I've been on council the first time and now, is that the garbage was always been sold to me as one of the perks of living in the city of Milford, my 1%, my income tax, and we, we, and we've had to ask our residents to pay more, and I, I would be hard pressed to ask any more of the garbage, and that's just something we're gonna have to figure out one way or the other, in my opinion, that.
I talked to Benjamin about that, and I said, but, that's been, that one, that's been for 20-plus years, or 20 years, so that 1% unfortunately doesn't cover what it covered 20 years ago.
I agree. I agree, but that's why we've started asking residents, or requiring residents.
Pay for part of the garbage.
To, to pay, I don't remember what they pay.
Uh, not much.
Off the top of my head, it's $15.
Seven dollars a month, like seven dollars a month.
Yeah, yeah, or 15, it's 15.
Every other bill.
Bimonthly.
Yeah, yeah, bimonthly, so, so yes, so, uh, but those are all things that I think we as council, uh, need to be cognizant of, that as we make these decisions, that, um, we want to have money for projects, I know, but we also, uh, need to make sure these funds are whole first, that, you know, and at what cost, I guess.
And, and like I said, this, this really plays into the, the discussion on Monday, but.
I look forward to it, by the way.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, it, we're, we're really, we're really struggling, that's the facts. This year's been totally different, because we've, we're, we're operating under a significant, uh, negative budget, um, and we'll see the numbers, you'll see the numbers on Monday, but, you know, I've only got a $250,000 gap between revenues and expenses in the general fund, I can't do anything with that. So, that's where.
We can do a lot, we can operate this city to the best of our ability, that's what we can do.
Well.
Yeah.
That's right, to the best of our ability.
Yeah.
So, you know, this, uh, this isn't gonna change overnight, no matter what the decision is that we make, in the next how many years, we're gonna have to be very strategic with how we leverage outside, uh, funding opportunities to get stuff done, but, um, I don't want to go into my spiel for Monday, because then you wouldn't show up on, on Monday, so.
I'll be there.
Don't ruin the surprise.
Not that I know the right time, I'll be there.
I think we moved it to seven, Ralph.
So, just, uh, uh, one more thing, uh, so, once again, water, sewer, and stormwater, those updated budgets, obviously, that's not a final budget, that's only where the numbers sit currently, and that's a discussion for Monday, but I wanted to make sure council saw, uh, are able to see what those budgets look like currently, because we do have a very hard decision to make, uh, and I wanted to ensure that we had time to chew on that, uh, before that discussion, and we can work it out from there. That's all I have, thank you.
All right, thank you. That takes us to the end of our committee of the hall meeting, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
But that takes us to council comments, anyone in council like to make a comment?
Kind of to piggyback what Jamie said with, um, the trunk or treats, there's also the high school band is gonna be at Five Points on Wednesday, the 29th, from 6:00 to 8:00, doing tunes and treats.
Oh, fun.
Ooh, sounds like that, it's gonna be really cool too.
Yeah, very fun.
What time is that, Jamie?
Six to eight.
Six to eight, thanks.
Anything else?
And then, yeah, in, in, uh, honor of breast cancer awareness and, and our meeting tonight, uh, for those of you, uh, there's always been a Susan Coman walk, and this year they're doing a, a, a virtual walk, or, but, um, they are gonna actually have a More Than Pink Walk in downtown Milford, starting at 9:30 this Saturday, it's just a 30-minute walk, it's gonna, it's going to, um, uh, be a 30 minutes, you can make it as long as you want, but just for any, um, anybody who would like to come out and su, support the cause, and there's no money needed, uh, just come out and show up at 9:30, it's, uh, uh, some gal named Amy Velardo is spearheading this, uh, along with some other agents out of the Coldwell Banker Office in downtown Milford. So, this Saturday, 9:30, uh, you can reach out to her on social media if you want, uh, but again, uh, if you're available, 9:30 this Saturday.
Were they meeting at?
At the Coldwell Banker Office, right there, yes.
Any else?
I just wanted to give a shout out to our Public Works crew for that new, um, curb on Short Lila, down by Carriageway. That, that looks amazing, so cleaned up, and they just did a really great job, so, kudos to them.
Anybody else? All right, that takes us to new businesses, new business ordinances and resolutions, Mr. Check.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number 25 dash 405, an ordinance authorizing certain provisions of the water tower lease agreement with Sprintcom Inc., now therefore be ordained by the Council of the Municipality of Milford, Ohio, Section 1. The Council of the City of Milford hereby authorizes the city manager to enter into an agreement to amend certain provisions of the water tower lease agreement with Sprintcom Inc. for personal communication service, PCS, dated June 19, 2000, for leased premises located at 831 Wallace Avenue, Milford, Ohio, 45150, pursuant to and in accordance with the terms and conditions of the agreement. The agreement is attached here to and fully incorporated herein pursuant to and in accordance with section 12.03 of the Milford City Charter, Section 2, under and in accordance with sections 12.05 and 12.07 of the Milford City Charter. This ordinance should become effective immediately upon its passage by city council.
Motion to suspend the rules and read by title only. Second.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ordinance number 23 dash 25 dash 505, excuse me, an ordinance authorizing certain provisions of the water tower lease agreement with Sprintcom Inc.
Motion to adopt. Second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
No.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ordinance number 25 dash 406, an ordinance authorizing a lease agreement with AT&amp;T for equipment modification of cellular, uh, equipment, now therefore be ordained by the Council of the Municipality of Milford, Ohio. Section 1, oh, come on, my voice is so beautiful, why would you interrupt it with that beeping? The Council of the City of Milford hereby authorizes the city manager to enter into a lease agreement with AT&amp;T for modification of cellular equipment, at least premises located at 835 Wallace Avenue, Milford, Ohio, 45150, pursuant to and in accordance with the terms, uh, and conditions of the agreement. The agreement is attached here to and fully incorporated herein pursuant to and in accordance with section 12.05 of the Milford City Charter, Section 2, under and in accordance with sections 12.05 and 12.07 of the Milford City Charter. This ordinance should become effective immediately upon its passage by city council.
Motion to suspend the rules and read by title only. Second.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Ordinance number 25-406, an ordinance authorizing a lease agreement with AT&amp;T for equipment modification of cellular equipment.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Mr. Velardo?
No.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ordinance number 25-407, an ordinance directing the city manager to set aside all opioid funding for the upcoming purchase of the Milford Community Fire Department and ambulance purchase, whereas the city of Milford received opioid lawsuit settlement funds from Walgreens, Walmart, CVS, Teva, Janssen, Kroger, Allard Jan and Mackenzie, whereas the council of the city of Milford directs the city manager to allocate all revenues received by the city from opioid settlements from October 21, 2025 to the purchase of the new ambulance, now therefore be resolved by the council of the city of Milford. That, section one. City council hereby directs the city manager to set aside all opioid settlement funding, money received by the city after October 21, 2025 for the purchase of a new ambulance. Section two, this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from after its passage and approval.
Motion to suspend the rules and read by title only.
Second.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ordinance number 25-407, an ordinance directing the city manager to set aside all opioid funding for the upcoming purchase of the Milford Community Fire Department ambulance purchase.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
I recuse my vote due to conflict with employment.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ordinance number 25-408, an ordinance allowing the city manager to engage with Civic Plus for the creation of the C Click Fix and AI Chatbot Software, whereas the city of Milford has discussed with Civic Plus, expanding the city's customer service offerings to residents, businesses and city stakeholders, and whereas the AI Chatbot Software automates resident customer service by quickly and accurately answering common questions 24/7 using information from the city of Milford website and other integrated systems, and whereas the C Click Fix software allows residents to easily report non-emergency neighborhood issues like potholes, broken streetlights or sanitation problems to the city of Milford mobile app or web portal, and whereas the council of the city of Milford hereby authorizes the city manager to sign such agreements with the intention of not being billed until fiscal year 2026, now therefore be resolved by the council of the city of Milford. That, section one, the city manager is hereby authorized to engage with Civic Plus for the purposes of implementing the AI Chatbot and C Click Fix software per the attached agreement. The terms and conditions of this agreement are hereby incorporated herein by reference in their entirety pursuant to and in accordance with sections 12.03 of the Milford City Charter, section two, under and in accordance with sections 12.05 and 12.07 of the Milford City Charter.